Ladies and gentlemen, this is a special meeting. The president and the senior hall of the Southfield City Council for Monday, February 13th, 2012. And first we just call it all. Mr. Seiger.
Here.
Mr. Pocacek.
Here.
Mr. Frazier.
Here.
Mr. Jordan, Mr. T, Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
Mr. La.
Here.
Ms. Seymour.
Here.
We have a call. Thank you. Number one. First item on the agenda of the evening was the presentation for the Detroit Institute of Art Inside Out presented in Southfield. This is the museum's director, Major John Young. You're welcome.
Good afternoon, Councilor Lewis.
Yes.
Councilor President. We are coming with quite exciting projects to the council this afternoon. I will give you a brief introduction, and then we have with us representative of the DIA that worked with it, traveling exhibitions for the last two years. The DIA started two years ago to what they call DIA In-N-Out Art Exhibitions. It was presented in few cities already. It was in Birmingham downtown, in Royal Oak downtown, and it was presented in Novi. Those are just some communities that they took the exhibit to. Novi, it was at City of Warren, and in Sterling Heights. As I said, some of the communities where the art exhibit traveled for two, three months at one time. I forgot to mention, it was also in Detroit. Basically, those are reproductions of artworks. You have example here where it goes display. I think that it's in Detroit maybe, or in Detroit. So you have the artwork, which is the original size of the artwork, presented in different places, in, let's say, Royal Oak downtown, or Birmingham downtown. Now, it's not an exhibit where you walk from one frame to another. It's not a gallery where you move and you see each artwork. It's meant to be artworks in public places, but the whole idea is to show it in different places as you walk around downtown, or you travel from one place to another. Usually, they create a map, or we will create a map, where people can take the map and walk from one area, or travel from one area to another, to see the artwork. It's promoting the DIA. It's actually promoting art in public places, and takes the message to the metro Detroit area. It does not, as I said, we had two months ago a exhibit here where it goes along the road. You travel, you drove, and you saw the artwork. These will be presented in different places. Now, in Birmingham, they have the traditional downtown, so in Royal Oak. So you could, and Michelle can tell us, you could actually stay in Royal Oak downtown, but you have to walk or travel to different areas to see. We don't have a traditional downtown in Southfield, but the DIA people came and toured with us, the area here, and they loved the civic center. We felt that the civic center served as a center of the city, and they would like to present, they would bring to us seven artworks, outpieces. Five of them will be around the civic center. It will take place in early spring and early summer, April, May, and June. So when we begin to be very busy here, with the volleyball, tennis players, you name it, the athletic activities, the baseball, people who come to the library, we have actually the best time to show artwork in, around the civic center. Some of the places, Michelle will go and show us the outpieces, and which location they chose to put the artwork. I will only say that five pieces will be here, which means people can visit the library, and then get a map, and tour, just take a walk on a nice, early spring day, and see the artwork around the civic center. Two pieces will be presented, and the DIA loved the location. One is at Indaluk Park, and one is at Beechwood. And the idea was also to choose, they love the idea to present it in a park, where we know Indaluk Park is very busy, Beechwood is very busy, we have the Gold Coast there. But the whole idea, when people come to the clay lot at Indaluk, on the weekends it's very busy, with family and kids, they will be able to see the artwork there. Again, the whole idea is artwork, promoting the DIA, promoting the masterpieces from their collection, and reach out to the metro Detroit area, reach out to communities around Detroit, to bring people to the DIA. This is basically my introduction, and I would invite Michelle Houseby to present the art exhibition.
Thank you. Again, my name's Michelle. I work at the Detroit Institute of Art, and I'm actually the coordinator of Inside Out. And I thought I'd give you a quick background on the program. The museum celebrated 125 year anniversary, and as part of that anniversary, we wanted to connect with the community. Our main goal is to help people deepen their appreciation of art. So we partnered with a board member, we reproduced paintings, we put them throughout communities for a three month installation. They loved it. So because of that, we started to repeat the program. This will be the third year that Inside Out is taking place. We'll have 80 paintings, 80 reproductions of works from the museum's collections, spread out throughout 11 cities this spring, and we'd like to invite the City of House to participate. So we're bringing 80 reproductions to parks, metro areas, as part of a way to connect with our work. Okay. So, think of it like a traveling exhibition. So this spring, from April through June, we'll have 80 paintings in 11 cities. Those 80 paintings will rotate to 11 new communities this summer, and they come down. We're trying to delight people in bringing reproductions here. Each painting is waterproof, it's unvinyl, it's framed in a real frame, so why they're true, they're true to size. They have a label that connects, that tells what your work connects it to, to view the DIA and Michigan's history. There's also going to be a printed, a custom map, so as you're going on tour, you can walk around and take this map. Everything will be available online. There'll be a master map that shows you which other communities are participating along with you. We're also going to have our own Facebook site, our own blog, it's going to be sorted through social media and through printed materials. And we're offering a business free day for residents of Southfield to come into the real pieces and everything. So we'll give you a free Sunday, show a driver's license, you get fourth grade admission, we'll have maps, and then show you where your pieces are located in the museum. We're going to do two types of installation. We have a wall-mounted installation and a freestanding installation. Wall-mounted, they're going to go through the, first of all, we contract with a licensed line contractor, actually a contractor from Southfield. They're insured, we also carry liability insurance. For building mounts, they go into the mortar of the wall, and then we cut a, we create a custom aluminum shelf that the paintings sit on, and then we have secure hardware that actually connects the painting to the wall. So here's a diagram. And then freestanding reproductions are installed on a post that's driven 25 inches into the ground. When the painting, when the insulation is done, they pull the post out, and they just fill the space. So there's very, there's no remediation. Again, the DIA is going to cover the entire cost of the exhibition. We actually have funding, these grants from the Knight Foundation, who are going to fund this program for the next two years. They love to fund Random Acts of Culture, so they're looking at this as a way to, alongside with the artwork, we're going to have programming and events, and so the Knight Foundation would be great to come and board with this program. Should there be any damage to the works, the museum will come out and replace them. The city's not liable for theft or vandalism, there's no cost, and again, it's insured. So the program is completely free. This is a, I mentioned a few past installations. So in 2011, we were in 22 cities, in six different counties, from June through December. Birmingham being one of them. This is a sample wall installation in Hell, so you can see they're doing the painting. And then this is a sample freestanding installation in Milford, Milpon. So you can see it's on fence posts, there's also a map holder, so if you happen to walk by, you can pull out a map. And the whole point of this, or outcome that we're hoping, is the surprise and delight, and something that we didn't expect. Communities have really started to show pride in their own locations by putting these pieces in areas that you feel that are important to you. You know, communities are starting to, residents are starting to look at their area again and say, wow, I really, really like coming here, or this is a great location. And so, you know, the artwork at the museum belongs to everybody. We just have people here in Detroit. This program helps share that artwork with everybody. So if you can't make it down to the DIA, then you can enjoy these pieces in places that are meaningful to you, and that are comfortable to you, and we like that environment. So, proposed locations, the library, the entrance to the library. And we would like to place Benny Andrews, which is a contemporary artist, this is a portrait of a collage, collageist. They would be wall-mounted to the entryway of the library. We'd like to put one at the Memorial Gardens in the civic center, which is just outside. This is a Dutch work. It's a portrait of Sophia. And I know that the Parks and Recreation, so we're also hoping to do programs and events, not just bring your artwork and have the maps, but actually team up with the library, the Parks and Recreation Department. Actually bring custom tours and events that help you connect on another level. So I signed Sophia, because I know that you have a princess and superhero event with Parks and Recreation while it's on, so I thought that was a nice connection. Another idea could be either the other side of the Memorial Gardens, or the entrance to the city hall. This is an English painting. It's called "You Stand at Sunset." And then another idea was to probably put it in the lawn with the picturesque, the towers in the background, so amazing photo opportunity to have this great work of art with Southfield Towers in the back. And we'd like to place the Canaletto there. This is Richard Capitan Marco, as you can imagine, freestanding painting with the towers in the background. And then Beechwood's Recreation Center. Again, we're looking for delight and surprise. We're putting these in places like recreation centers, dog parks, bike trails, places that people would not imagine stumbling upon a great masterpiece. So we're really excited about places like parks and this recreation center. This would be wall-mounted. We'd like to give you "Stella Don Amelia," which was actually in the, it was in the image I showed you earlier at the Howl Opera House. You can actually see it as it was reproduced and mounted to the wall. We're also considering the entrance to the Parks and Recreation area, because it's a very busy location, it's in the civic center. We want it to be wall-mounted. We'd like to give you "The Net Gathers," which is one of our most popular paintings in the museum. It's one of the most frequently visited, it's a Buh-Buh-Roe, it's a really nice work of art. And then we also, we're looking at Inglewood Park. So we could put it in front of the place, gave it more in front of the barn. And the piece is "Reginald Marsh," which is a modern work. It's called "The Boy Ballroom." It's very active and engaging, children love it. It's very popular on our tours. So, looking at our calendar, we're hoping to do the installations toward the end of March. Your works of art would be on display April, May, and they come down to the MSG, and they rotate to new communities. So I just want to give you a kind of timeline of when your works would be. I believe the free Sunday is in May, and we've indicated for Southfield residents, but I have that written down. And if you have any questions.
It may be funny, but are they for sale too?
I'm sorry?
Are they for sale?
Oh, are they for sale? Some of the, some of the prints, we actually, our board member has a company called Smart Editions, and he has, he has made smaller versions of the prints available. The reproductions themselves are not, because we need them to continue to do the installations through our grant for the next two years. But if you're interested, I can tell you how we made them. Anything else?
Yeah, I just have a question. If you go to a museum, there's kind of a plaque next to it that explains it?
Yeah.
Or is it all, is it next to the paint, or is it all in the pamphlet?
It's attached. We'll go back. It's hard to see. Sorry, I should have given you a close-up of it. We have a plaque that lists the Knight, oh, the Knight Foundation, it lists the work of art, it lists the title, and then it gives a brief description about the work of art and the program itself. It'll tell you that there are more pieces available, and it's going to drop you to our website. So our website, we're actually going to have an Inside Out link, so it would be DIA/Inside Out that you can, that'll take you to and learn about, learn about, learn to see the CMF's or map, and learn about where your pieces are. And you can download the maps from the website as well. We're hoping to do a smartphone app, but I don't know if it'll be produced in title, but. Oh, you can't see it? Okay. There's the button. Yeah, sorry. It's hard to see. It's a waterproof plaque that will attach to all of your artwork. So if it's freestanding, it attaches to the side, and the wall-mounted, it's going to be on the same side. And then if it's freestanding, there'll be a plastic container with the fold-out walking map.
And does that map include the date of that Sunday?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
It will. It will include your free Sunday. We're also doing things like photo contests for books, for Hope to Award membership. We want people to engage and have fun with it. So we're hoping to have Flickr photo contests, where you can upload photos yourself, or creative images, and we'll have categories, and we'll award memberships for free tickets. We're doing a geocaching, which is a treasure hunting game. It's really popular with smartphones. You download a GPS, you basically seek out my coordinates, and then there's a cache that actually has prizes in it that will fill free tickets to the film theaters, stickers, as a way to get people involved. We're also wanting to do, you know, each, each city is doing its own sort of programming, so we're in communication, trying to come up with different events, like art-making workshops, or tours, maybe start at the library, and actually we send to a docent, and we do a guided tour. Other communities, we've organized bike trail, or bike tours. We've organized dog walking tours, where people actually walk their pets with the docent, and they, they're outside, and they're experiencing meetings with their dog, or we've actually had candlelight tours with flashlights under the full moon. We're just trying to make this fun and creative. So there are a bunch of, we're still coming up with the programs for Southfield, but it's been a couple of things that just haven't worked.
I really like this idea of Random Acts of Culture that kind of expands on a conversation we had at the table a couple weeks ago.
We actually have, in Detroit, we have the pieces installed along the riverfront, the Dequintercut, Eastern Market. So we put together a bicycle tour that started at the museum. We toured people down to the riverfront, and we had Random Acts of Culture along with the works of art. So we had a high school group do a poetry performance in response to one of the paintings. We had a Baroque concert in Dequintercut. We had a cooking demonstration in Eastern Market, and then we ended at the museum with the unveiling of the Detroit Real Photography Civic. So it was really kind of a way to, not just the DIA, not just the works of art, but to appreciate Detroit. And that's kind of how, how we're trying to focus this program, is to make things all a two-year city, to find places that you find relevant and important, to help tie that back to your community. Kind of, kind of what we're going for. It's all about community, and pride, and ownership, something that we've really, an outcome that we didn't expect, you know, people coming to the museum, thinking, that's my painting. And it's really great, because in a sense, it is everybody's painting. Any other questions?
Last summer, I was walking down Maple and Birmingham, and exactly what you're saying, a little surprise, a couple of paintings on the wall. I forgot which one it was, but nonetheless, it was, I get it, I would love to have this here.
Great.
And I have just one technical question. I'm assuming if you put it on the wall of some of our buildings, that you restore the wall?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Yes. On, we will, they will fill the hole, so they're going to go into the mortar to break, to the bricks and the hards, and then they fill it with a mortar silicone compound, and they, they color match it. So after 200 installations over the last two years, we've had no complaints or issues or remediation. They've been, they're very, the company we contracted with is very cautious, very careful. For all the freestanding works, we'll contact Misty to make sure there's no utilities running over there, and then we'll make sure that you know when we're coming out. They'll do the installation this day, and they're very careful about, about actually the remediation. And we do ensure the space as well. So should there be any damage, we cover physical property coverage for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, we will, we would have, we will have one of our building people go with when we install, when we go to the building, so that it's easy.
Sure, sure. Of course.
So these are, playing like an award.
It's a, it's an exciting program, and the museum is, is just overjoyed with the response that we've gotten. As a cultural institution, you know, we know that seeing artwork is really important, but we can't bring you our real mango. It's too precious to take outside of the museum. So this has given us an opportunity to share these pieces with everybody, and the stories and the responses have just been really gratifying and overwhelming. So it's fun. We're getting, we're getting very excited to start the next round. We are going to have an official press release on the 23rd of February. We have not disclosed which communities are actually participating this year. We're going to formally announce all of our spring communities. So if you can not publicize it until then, we'd appreciate it. And we're also inviting everyone to a time out meeting, so if you can make it down to the museum, the press conference is at 10:30. Thursday, February 23rd, at 10:30. And our director will give a, will give a presentation, and we're going to have a member of the Knight Foundation there to officially start with the program, and then we'll see the works of art in the museum afterwards too. So if you'd like to stay, and you'd like to see these pieces in person, we'll tour and show you where the works of art are located.
You mentioned, you mentioned the magazine that was going to be.
Oh, yeah. So I mentioned that the Detroit installations were in the Dequintercut. It's not somewhere in the Dequintercut. It's an old railroad that was abandoned, and the graffiti artists came in, and they actually graffiti this space. The Riverfront Conservancy cleaned it up, and they made it a walking path. People walked from the riverfront to the Eastern Market. I just found out today that an image of one of our installations in the Dequintercut made it, was published in the National Geographic Travel Magazine for April, March and April. So there's a, there's a great article about Detroit, about visiting Detroit, and in there, they also hit the, they printed a two, a full spread, two-page image of our, of our works installed in the Dequintercut. So it's really exciting that they picked that up. So, and I'll, I'll meet you back for coffee, I'll try to.
Yeah, I have a question. The grant is for how long?
The grant is for two years.
Two years?
Tonight is actually funding this towards 2013.
Okay, is there a possibility of having it renewed? Because.
Possibly.
Yeah, there's, exposing people to art, I think it's pretty important, and there are an awful lot of people that think that to enjoy art, you have to be in a different category of life than.
And that's exactly what we're trying to get past.
Yeah.
We're trying to get past that. That's something, as a museum, you know, traditionally have a very elitist.
It's for the other reason.
Yeah, it's not. It's not. And so we're really trying to, to share, and, and there's so many connections. The DIA has so many connections with Detroit, and you have such a nugget here, you know, the Ford family and the Dodge family. You know, these pieces were bought by people who lived here. They weren't just purchased, you know. So there's a lot, there's a lot of deep, meaningful things here, and, you know, artists were looking here because it's, because it's who was here and who was supporting here. And so we're really trying to branch out, to share that with people. And, you know, it is important, and we didn't, we didn't expect this program would take off like it did. Again, when I said, we did this in 2010, it was just to celebrate 125 years. We put it out there, we used our own funding, we didn't know who would enjoy and who wouldn't. And as soon as we started selling in September, people just loved it. They thought it was a great program, so we started approaching other foundations, and so last year, DPE Energy funded the program for last year, and then Knight found out about it, and through this Random Acts of Culture, they gave us another two-year grant.
Good.
I would love to continue the program forever, replace, you know, change paintings up. And even though we're using the same works of art, what I find compelling is that you change location every time, so the setting changes, and the context changes, and the feeling of how you view this work of art changes. And I see these pieces every day at work, but when I see them outside, you know, in autumn colors, or with the snow, or by a barn, I notice things that I didn't notice before, and it has to be my appreciation of pieces that I didn't actually appreciate either. So it's a great program.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you for being interested, and we're very excited again to bring this to you. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, and enjoy your meetings and your free day, and we're back. Thank you, Michelle. I think we all agree it's a great program. Thank you very much.
Next, we have the, we see the proposal, the cross-connection program.
Yes, after that very professional presentation.
Thank you.
That was excellent. One of the.
We're going to be unprofessional now? We can turn the pitch. We're going to be unprofessional?
I'm going to be the entertainment. Okay. All right.
And artwork too.
This is, this is dedicated to Councilman Fraser, but all of council. I'm going to try and explain the cross-connection a little bit. This is going to be, this will take a while.
Part of the art that.
Yeah, this is, this is industrial art.
Sculpture.
Industrial sculpture, there you go.
Put that in our galleries, people wouldn't know it.
So, okay. Now, we've done the cross-connection program for a long time, and it's an MDEQ-required activity. We determined that it's definitely more efficient and effective to utilize outside services for this. The item itself reflects a 22% reduction in cost because of the familiarity and experience of the vendor with the project, the general, the MDEQ requirements, as well as our, our requirements and standards of protocol. So what this thing does here is it separates clean water from dirty water. How am I doing so far?
So far, you do that.
Okay. Now, if you, if you're a business and you have one of these, that's a good thing. If you don't have one of these, the inspector will say, get one, or something like this. Some device that separates out and keeps the clean water and the dirty water separate. Right? Now, if you are in a highly specialized area, such as a kidney dialysis function, you need the best equipment, specifications for that, and you get inspected each year. If you are in a less, a less exposed area, where it doesn't involve people. Up to five years. Okay? It's up to every five years. There's a protocol, and it's, and a, a schedule set up through MDEQ. Now, if you got one of these on there, that's a good thing. Okay? That means it's been inspected. All right? That's the whole program. How am I doing so far?
Expected.
Expected, sort of.
Now, I wanna, I would, I wanna take a minute. I did this for two reasons. One is for entertainment purposes for you guys. I, I got an A in physics, but I never learned anything practical, in high school physics. Because it's supposed to, it doesn't have to do, it's something like siphoning gas, same kind of effect.
Kinda, kinda like...
This is Larry Searle, so if Larry stands up, take a bow. Now Larry is the person, in the middle of the night, the Hope United Methodist Church, when they were under flooded conditions and their good faith plumbing people couldn't quite figure, figure it out. Okay, Larry stood out in the middle of the parking lot and said, "Dig here." And they dug there, and that's where the pipe was burst, right? So therefore, they could go through with the services that they had planned for the next day, which is about the Southfield standard that says, "Go the extra mile, people first." So I wanna thank you for that. Great, great. I, I remember the, and the next day when you tried to explain it to me. So this is it. This is my item. Mr. Fraser, are we anything better off for this effort or...
Well, uh, looks like Rube Goldberg was...
This is action. That's it. That's the program. Uh, how many businesses we gotta inspect each year?
Twenty-two, uh, this year twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred businesses.
Twelve hundred per year, the next two years. Yes. Twenty-four hundred total.
It's on the consent agenda, and so that's the...
Every business.
Every business.
Every business has to have one.
It's been last, well, it's been last probably ten, fifteen years.
That concludes my offer of...
Is that it because of that time?
Didn't do it.
Basically, yes.
Is there a tax upon the businesses or costs?
There is no tax to the business or cost to a business right now.
It's in the water, the water...
It's in the water sewer rates right now. Pardon?
I'm just getting out a question.
This is just information, Jeff.
Yes, uh, there's, well, it's on the consent agenda.
Right, let me see. Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I do have a question that's, uh, I might as well ask it here rather than, uh, at the next meeting because it's on the consent agenda. And that is, in the material for the consent agenda, it says that we approved this in two thousand and eight.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, is this, has this been going on since two thousand and eight? Because when you read the, the background material, it, it implies, or I don't know if it's implied or impursed, it's about that this is the first time we've got a contract.
No, it's the second time we've got a contract. The first time was two thousand and eight.
But that's, if you read it, that's not what it says. It says the two thousand and eight council authorized a contract. Now, three people, three people bid, and now we're gonna award the contract.
Two thousand and eight, we, we put out the bid, hydrodesign, got the contract at that time. And again, we put out the bid just this year. So it's been since two thousand and eight.
Okay, good.
Uh, paragraph two, could use a little work. I agree with that. You, you can't, you can't quite get there because there's a missing piece.
And there's a legal...
We said the company, uh, provided services to a satisfactory level, which we did. And it's just set around.
Correct.
You can't quite, you can't quite get there.
Yeah, it takes a legal page to get there. Okay. But when I read that, I just thought, wow. Okay, thanks.
Otherwise, you couldn't have twenty-two percent decrease.
Right. You approved it, yeah. You did approve in two thousand and eight, yeah.
Okay.
If you have a contract, uh, and a contract, it'll be cost to somebody, cost to us.
Cost to us in the water and sewer.
Hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred dollars a year not to achieve, but water's all maintained.
Right.
Yes.
Right. And it's gotta be clean water, you know?
Pardon me?
It's gotta be clean water.
That's correct. That's why we have it in there. It's what is clean water.
Uh, yes, sir.
All right, next item, the pawn shops and alternative financial services discussion, Mr. Crowe.
Thank you. If I could just have a minute to say...
Right, so we get their original contract, then it's done. You're done with the spine, and now we're going back out.
Oh, I got your approval.
At your regular meeting tonight, uh, under consent judgment, we're requesting that the council consider authorizing a hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium on, uh, pawn shops and alternative financial services, which include check cashing, services, currency exchange, payday loans and other similar services as a primary function. Planning Department has been studying this issue for some time over the last several weeks. This was also discussed at the January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve Neighborhood Services Meeting. And, uh, currently, I have a map up here that indicates that there are thirteen standalone check cashing for alternative financial services, as well as four pawn shops. Pawn shops are indicated in blue triangles. Here, 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 and here. And the green rectangles with the, uh, check indicate the check cashing facilities. Now, I know that, um, pawn shops are regulated through the state, and the mayor's office and the police department have to sign off, and we're not. We're not suggesting changing that. But many communities regulate the retail operation as a special approval through the council with special requirements. And in order for us to study this further and bring it through the planning commission process, public hearing and a recommendation back to city council, we're requesting a hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium be put in place. Now, we already have a lot of work done on this item. But, um, prior to any more coming into the community, we'd like to have that, that time to, to do its, uh, do justice on studying. Pawn shops, as you know, have, um, many unintended consequences. There's a lot of undesirable elements. And they're currently, uh, regulated only as retail. So anywhere retail is permitted, pawn shops are permitted. But no special approval, no special rate, uh, requirements or regulations. Some of the things we are considering are setback distances from one pawn shop to another, setback distances from residential to these things, and schools and religious institutions, limiting hours of operation. With regard to the alternative financial institutions, check cashing, these are legal loan shop theme types of businesses that, um, conduct business all hours of the day. Unlike a bank that's only open during the day from nine to five and on Saturdays, these check cashing facilities are open till late hours of the night. And again, there's a lot of unintended consequences with these types of business. And we're starting to see a proliferation and a concentration of the standalone check cashing facilities throughout our community. So again, uh, we're not here to talk about the specific requirements. We're only requesting, under your regular meeting, the chance to have a moratorium put in place so we can further study and bring back these recommendations from the planning commission. That's a, um, future date. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have at this time.
Uh, first of all, Mr. Lance?
This, this reminds me of another problem we have. There are several corporations that, that are lenders that lend money to subprime, for subprime purchases of automobiles to the dealers. Uh, twenty-five percent of more interest. And they included in the same category as these check cashing places who lend out money at, they offered in...
We haven't, through the, through the chair, Mr. Lance, we haven't pinpointed all the types of businesses. This way, there's, the professional standard is to call them alternative financial institutions.
So they included...
They could, they, they possibly could be. We, we want some time to do some further study. We have, um, requested information from the National Planning Advisory Service to look at best practices from other communities. We haven't had time to go through all that material yet. Some of these are good, good issues that will come out through the process. So I have a note here to, to look into those as well.
Okay, but they do fall into the category of subprime lending, disacting, check cashing companies?
Possibly, yes.
And they will be looked into in the, in the future?
We, we will look into that during our process.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Terry, we talked about it before. Uh, for example, grocery stores, uh, do cash checking and, uh, pay utility bills, and that seems to be coming in a regular type of business in the small stores. How are you gonna differentiate between these places open up, they save cash, and then they cash your check or utilities? And, and they both do the same thing.
Right.
And make money the same way, but they call it different things. It could be divided up into a primary and secondary use of the...
That's correct. I think, um, in our, our preliminary discussion and, and investigation on the definition, uh, we are defining them as primary operations, or what we call storefront operations. And that the secondary operation could possibly be limited to a certain percentage of their store, store square footage. And again, those will all come out throughout the process. Right now, we're only recommending storefront, primary operations with a moratorium out. We're not looking at, um, those that do that as, as a secondary or tertiary business within a grocery store. And that might came out in the recommendations, but, um, the moratorium is for standalone or storefront, primary operations.
Well, I think, I think both have to be controlled. I just want a separation of primary or secondary.
The problem that I... I'm sorry, oh, you're kidding? But Fraser had a...
Yeah, a couple of, a couple of questions. One of the things you said is that, uh, uh, some of these businesses run way into the, into the night. Is, are you considering doing, uh, hours of operation?
That's one of the recommendations as a special approval, is that the council could consider limiting hours of operation.
Okay, now, the pawn shops that are licensed and controlled by the state, uh, do they have any kind of limitation on their hours of operation?
Uh, I'd have to defer to the police department. I don't, I haven't gotten that far into it, but, um, again...
The state law does not limit the hours.
So we might be setting up a, a conflict because, I, I, I agree with you that we probably ought to limit the hours. But if one can work, operate, you know, twenty-four hours a day, and the other one, we make them close at ten o'clock at night?
Well, I, through the chair, I would, I would imagine this is similar to the childcare, where local municipalities have the right to add additional layers of protection. Obviously, we'll have to work very closely with the legal department. I just can't answer that right now.
Okay, I just...
But that's a good point.
And because we've asked just a few questions about what constitutes, uh, an alternative, uh, uh, financial services, maybe we should have, for the council's benefit, a list of what is considered regular or acceptable financial and another list of the alternates, so that there's no confusion with us that, "Why didn't you consider this? Why did you consider that?"
If I could, just again, um...
What do you go through?
Yes, but, um, just to help, um, examples of alternative financial services are check cashing services, currency exchange, payday loans, and other similar services as a primary function. And again, I can't name all of them at this time, but those are, I think we could work through what a similar operation is as a primary function.
Okay, similar to one might not be similar to somebody else.
I, I understand that.
There is, uh, Councilman Lance just brought up, uh, one that may have not been even on the list of either, either side because it was kinda like a different kind of business.
Right. Um, there is a provision in the resolution. Mr. Barris helped, helped draft a similar resolution that if a business needs to get relief, they could come and petition to the council that there's a unique circumstance. Therefore, you would have, there's, there's a, a relief, um, provision in the resolution that if someone feels that they're into it, being constrained by this moratorium, they can certainly petition the council for consideration. So we feel that with that provision in the, uh, resolution, that, um, we're covering ourselves.
Okay, uh, I think I have one other question, two other questions. And that is the, uh, the resolution that's in our, in our package that we're gonna add in tonight. Should that have, I presume that that's the resolution. Should it have a place at the end where it shows, uh, signature and a date? Because it says, in the, in the body of the resolution, it says a hundred-and-eighty days from this date, but there's no place under it to show what date it was approved on the resolution itself.
I think we can work with the city clerk's office.
The clerk would usually add that at the bottom.
They certify.
And it would say the date that it was approved and signed by the clerk.
Just to be cranky, shouldn't that be part of our package?
Do you see the actual format of it? Sure, when you can, you can start anything else.
Okay. Well, 'cause some of them do, some of them do have a place for the signature and date and all. And, uh, the last point that I'd like to make, it's, um, when we see, uh, an influx of, of things, the example I'm gonna use is, uh, for, as far as I'm concerned, it's a proliferation of pharmacies. All of a sudden, we're seeing them pop up like mushrooms. Uh, I think the council really needs to know that. Even though administratively, you might be able to, uh, approve those, if a lot of them start popping up, uh, something's in the air. And I think the council needs to be aware of that. The other, you know, the piece of that is nail places, you know? I, you know, I just hate to see us overrun with, uh, nail tech places that, you know, every hundred feet, there's another nail tech place.
Right.
Because what that, to me, what that does is it signals what the community is becoming. And I think we need to, uh, know that ahead of time, so.
Through the chair, just, we can always do a better job, but we try to monthly put planning activity reports in the blue information sheets. And we list all of the admin, site plan, special use, everything that we're working on. And again, I, I hear you. Uh, but that's one attempt to at least get that information of what, what's going through our, our offices. Sometimes we're a month behind, but we try to, uh, within a month or two, get you those planning activity reports and get those in your packet under, under the blue information sheets. But I hear what you're saying.
Okay, thanks.
Um, Mr. Lance?
Uh, coming back, I think Aaron mentioned tiers of second tiers, or was it, all right, somebody mentioned it. So this, uh, this big company, this big lender, is that a second-tier lender? Or is he gonna be included into the, the first investigation?
Through the chair, we're, we're talking about our primary function of lending. So the storefront, retail storefront or standalone businesses, that that's what they do and they advertise themselves.
Okay, so why can't we include these big corporations that are lenders, subprime lenders too? In the same category and not wait?
We, we, we will, um, there, there's a definition about what's regulated by the federal government. And we'll use that as our standard to separate between banks and financial institutions that are regulated by the federal government and those that are not. And I cannot answer that question at this time, whether or not this subprime loan. That'll be part of our investigation.
Can I suggest that Mr. Lance forward to Mr. Crowe, the places in particular that you're concerned with?
I can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful.
We even gave them a tax abatement, and I, and I screamed murder.
Acceptance.
And I screamed and screamed and nobody heard my screams. Wow, that's serious. It's more dangerous than the storefront places. Well, all right, I hope it'll be included.
Okay, I could share the 13 businesses that have been identified. Elite Finance, Cash Giant, American General Finance, The Fans America has four locations, Quick Money, Premier Mortgage Funding, Cash in Hand, Chuck and Go, Cash Advance. Those have been identified as primary standalone or storefront businesses in our community under the alternative financial services. There may be others. This was our initial review. So if you have additional sites, we'd be happy to look into them.
I was just, you're asking for a 180-day moratorium. What's your timeline kind of moving forward? What do we see next and when do we see it?
Since the department's already started work, we hope within 30 days to have it in front of our planning commission. The planning commission will go through the public hearing process. I believe within 90 days, we'll start having something in front of the council, our work studies and workshops. We may be able to wrap this up within 180 days, but we just, I did want to ask for 90 and then come back and ask for additional time. But we're well into this already.
Is that it?
That's all.
Um, do you know?
Thank you.
It sounds like a reasonable period of time. Okay, next item, updating on special, on special pieces of value with wetlands restoration. Hi. It's very tough. Can I have these? The key touch. I can't turn off the lights.
The watch app.
The watch.
Let's say we came to the forecouple. We are part of the Alliance of Rouge Communities and there was a large basin-wide grant for the entire Great Lakes Basin, covers Wisconsin, Indiana, Illinois, parts of Ohio, and the watershed of the Great Lakes qualifies for funding from the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative because of the value and importance of the Great Lakes water. So the Rouge River watershed forces within that basin. And one of the projects that was applied for, the Alliance of Rouge Communities applied for grants for restoration projects within the Rouge. And we had identified in our Rouge Green Corridor Habitat Management Plan, the value of a certain wetland that's below Denso, kind of west of Telegraph and south of Civic Center Drive, right below the Denso building. Andy will point that out to you.
Well, it's in both tiers, Telegraph and then Civic Center Drive, both on the left side, Telegraph.
So that area has a lot of, completely engulfed with two invasive plants, Fragmites and Reed Canary Grass. It's very dense grasses that both have limited resource value, have no habitat value. You see a lot of the Fragmites along the highways. So this was identified as a prime resource area and it went in as one of the projects with the grant application through the Alliance of Rouge Communities for the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Grant. And that grant was approved. Some of the other projects, I think there's Restoration and Rouge Park and Undell Isle and some other places through the Alliance of Rouge Communities. So we brought a grant agreement to you in May, at the end of May, and then the consultant, environmental consultant in technology is also the consultant for the Alliance of Rouge Communities as well as our consultant. So they prepared the plan. So this is about $300,000 or $270,000 in Southfield of that, of that grant to restore this wetland. And the plan came up, so we're, we are working on it, but it's a zero match except for granting my time and the fire marshal's time for, for Southfield. Payments are all made through the Alliance of Rouge Communities. This portion of the project, the most effective and efficient way to manage some of these invasive species is through what's called prescribed burns. We have never done a prescribed burn in Southfield. They are done in cities throughout Michigan, so we thought we'd better stop and take a moment. And we've been working with Fire Marshal Jim Dundas on a permit, but we thought, for instance, we've never done anything like this on any of our natural areas, so we'd better have a discussion about this program. Today, we have Gary Crawford. He's a senior biologist with Environmental Consulting and Technology. He's going to speak with us. And David Mendel, who's with Plantwise, he's a burn consultant. So this is the type of thing that he does every day. So here's Gary.
Thank you for allowing us to have this opportunity to leave in.
Excuse me, but when you give your name, did you give us your business address, cousin, brother, secretary? And your full name and your business address?
My name is Gary Crawford. I'm from Environmental Consulting and Technology. Our business address is 2200 Commonwealth Fuller Park, Suite 300, Ann Arbor, Michigan, 48105. We also have offices in Clinton Township and Detroit as well. And like I said, I thank you all for allowing us this time to present this project to you. I think what we have here is a really good project and of high value for the natural ecosystem in Southfield specifically at the Valley Woods location. What I want to do really quickly is talk to you about the purpose and need for prescribed burns, deal with the prescribed burn planning effort that's going on right now. And you are part of this burn planning effort. And begin to talk about the implementation of prescribed burns. At that time, I'll hand that over to our burn boss who is here, Dave Mendel, who will be talking about the implementation and giving you some, a little bit more project information. One of the things that I really wanted to communicate tonight was that prescribed fire is something that, you know, most people think of fire as being something destructive. They think of burning houses and cars on fire or whatever else. But actually, prescribed fire is something that can be very constructive for the natural environment. The indigenous peoples of this state and all over use fire as a way to revitalize natural areas that were being used for agriculture as well as create openings in places that were kind of becoming overgrown by other vegetation that were not desirable for some of the game species that they were trying to hunt for. And so we have a quote from someone back in 1834 when he was amazed by some of the large openings and open kind of oak savanna type of habitat in Silo Township near Dexter. Another thing that prescribed fire is used for is to maintain ecosystem diversity. Here we have a lake plain prairie habitat, which is very susceptible to being overgrown by a large amount of shrubby and wady vegetation. And when many early settlers came by and saw some of these areas that were open and full of all types of diverse plant, plant fauna, they had to, they were trying to figure out what is going on with this. But then they began to see that it's the actual, the Native Americans who were kind of helping these ecosystems along by repeatedly burning these ecosystems. And some of the actual plants that come up in these lake plain prairie areas actually need fire in order to continue to be as abundant. In the area of Valley Woods, we have two really, what I would call nasty invasive species. These are plants that just kind of form a deep, thick lawn of vegetation that prevents a lot of other types of vegetation from coming forward. Now, diversity is important because there's things like threatening endangered butterflies, dune skipper's and things like that, which need certain types of vegetation. And if they don't have it, they can't complete their life cycle. And so when you have a monoculture or one type of a certain vegetation, then it eliminates these other plants and things that other wildlife need to live off of. So we have Reed Canary Grass, and this is actually pictured in Valley Woods, just a big dense growth here on your right or left, maybe your left, my right. And then Fragmites Australis. I don't know if you've seen Fragmites before, but it is a big problem in the state all over, especially on waterfront, but also in wetland areas. Not only does Fragmites outgrow everything, it changes the ability of a wetland to have water in it because it takes up so much water, it can actually dry it out. And by its process of growing and dying, it can lift the floor of the wetland so that it no longer functions as well as a wetland. And those wetland habitats are very, very important when we're trying to restore it. As you can see, it can restore native plant communities. On your left is an example of an area that was overgrown by a lot of vegetation. And once we use prescribed fire to burn that, it begins to show these woodland flowers that are rarely seen in areas that are heavily, have a heavy under story, trout. Here is another area where you've got a prairie, you've got other types of very, very sensitive plants. What we want to do in a prescribed burn, the first thing first is to plan. And you want to determine what are the goals of your burn? Is it to improve habitat? Is it to restore vegetation? Sometimes people use it on agricultural fields to recondition the soil. So there's many different reasons for it. And so typically, we want to create a burn plan and I'll kind of go through the different steps here as we move forward. One of the things to do is determine goals, as we said. Some areas where you have a lot of under story vegetation that's not useful for birds and wildlife, then we would prescribe fire to kind of remove that wholesale, deal with that type of vegetation. Over here on the left at the top, there was a bunch of smaller red maple coming into an oak forest. And use prescribed fire to deal with the smaller red maple, which are not supposed to be in that location. Certain areas, we may, we may want to get rid of a lot of the warm season grass so some of the wildflowers that are useful for our pollinators, bees and things like that, can be established. One of the things that you want to do in a prescribed burn is first of all, indicate what area you're going to burn. And it helps to be able to know what types of things that will serve as containment for your fire. And so we base our burn units, which is the area that we're going to burn, on habitat and natural breaks such as water. Or it can be a change in the type of fuel or vegetation on the land. So going from grasses to maybe going into a forested area that has less fuel on the ground in terms of leaves and things like that. Sometimes that can even serve as a break. At other times, we create our own burn break by mowing or wetting and things like that. So when we create a burn plan, we want to provide who owns the area and make sure all that is in this written documentation that has to be reviewed by the fire marshal and through, it outlines the goals of the burn, characteristics of the site, establishes who the neighbors are and what the potential smoke concerns are from the burn, weather patterns and parameters that would be best for the burn, which way the wind direction is, which way is the most positive way for wind direction to occur, equipment needs and other things. At this time, I'm going to ask Dave Mendel to kind of come forward because he's going to actually talk about the process of implementing the fire.
Sure.
I'm David Mendel with Plantwise LLC.
Do you think we've got this?
Business address is 224 Charles Street in Ann Arbor, 48103. So Gary's given a great understanding of why we're burning and the, some of the planning elements that go into it. One of the key elements, as he described, is a burn plan. And we've developed a burn plan for the Valley Woods property. And we met last week with Fire Marshal Jim Dundas and had a great discussion. And I just wanted to kind of show a little bit of, this is an example of a burn plan. It doesn't happen to be for Valley Woods, but it gives an idea of that there's, we've got a map of the site and we're indicating very clearly what the burn boundaries are, how that burn unit is delineated. We're also kind of looking at, as Gary mentioned, what the weather parameters are, what's the ideal humidity, temperature conditions, and what our emergency contact information is. I mentioned we had a, we had a good discussion with the fire marshal and we're, could continue to talk with him about the final, the final elements that are needed for securing the permit. And I should add that in this portion of Michigan, the local fire department is the body that does the permitting process. In other portions of the state, the Michigan Department of Natural Resources and even the DEQ, the Department of Environmental Quality, also can weigh in on issuing permits. But here in Southfield, it is, it is the local fire department. One of the really key elements in conducting the burn is to, is to really make sure that the smoke, which is going to be the most visible element for residents in the area, that the smoke is going where we want it to go. We've got Telegraph immediately to the east, we've got 10 miles to the south. And so we're looking for conditions that are going to take the smoke primarily back into existing natural areas. And as the smoke lifts, it'll be, you know, well above the height of houses and residences. And you can see a photo on the, on the right, is a good example of kind of atmospheric conditions which allow rapid smoke rising. And that's what we're looking for in a case like this. In addition, in our, in our discussion with the fire marshal, we talked about really trying to target a weekend for burning, again, to kind of minimize the amount of traffic that's going to be exposed to the burn on the, on the day that the burn takes place. We'll do this burn with probably five people on site. And we get together prior to lighting and we discuss in detail kind of the parameters of the unit, how we're going to go about ignition. And everybody has a role. Everybody understands whether they're igniting, whether they're helping to suppress the fire, control the fire lines. You'll see also that we're all equipped with personal protective equipment. So it's all fire retardant clothing, hard hats with face shield, gloves, boots. Everybody has a two-way radio, so we're able to be in touch with each other at all times throughout the burn. And then we're ready to start, we're starting, ready to start the fire. Gary described how we use changes in vegetation or we create our own breaks. And one of the things that we, that we start to do at the, at the beginning of the burn is to use fire to widen those downwind burn breaks. So in this case, we're, we're starting all the way at the, well, with Valley Woods, what we would be doing is we're looking for winds that are out of the northeast. And that's going to kind of continue to push the smoke away from Telegraph, which is kind of the biggest, the biggest concern that we've identified. So we're going to start the burn all the way at the southwest corner of the burn unit, the downwind most area. And we're going to let the fire kind of creep back slowly into the wind. And in that way, we're able to control it in the easiest way possible. And that's called a backburn. Again, we're just, we're letting the fire fight its way back into the wind. There are portions of the burn, as Gary mentioned, there's, there's heavy, heavy loads of Reed Canary Grass and Fragmites. And for really short periods of time, we'll probably have much, much larger flames. In particular, when a fire is in the Fragmites, that Fragmites has a lot of oil in the, in the stems. And anytime vegetation is, is burning, that contains a lot of... And anytime vegetation is, uh, is burning, that, that contains a lot of oil, it produces darker, blacker smoke. And so we would have very brief periods, and, and I'm thinking in the, in the, probably around five minutes, five to 10 minute period, where we would have kind of denser slopes. Again, that's moving in a direction that we're, that we're anticipating. So just to, just to give a sense, we'd again be, be looking for winds that are, that are out of the northeast which are carrying the, the, uh, smoke back down into a, another natural area so that we're, we're minimizing the disturbance. You can see the, the lighter colored areas in through here behind that, the, the hatching is all the, the reed canary grass and the grassy types of vegetation. The, the darker green is, is, uh, is obviously the trees. And it's primarily floodplain forest. And one of the characteristics of floodplain forests is that there's, there's not very much fuel, burnable material on the ground in those areas because it's so wet and things decompose very quickly. So that's one of these types of, of, uh, of fuel transitions that we're using as, as our burn break in, uh, in a, in a large portion of the site. And of course, the Rouge River is, is running, uh, right through this area as well.
David, can you mention the height difference between Denso and, and the floodplain?
Yeah, so, so on the, on the, the median west edge of, of the burn unit is a, a very steep, uh, wood that runs up probably about, uh, it's probably about a forty foot elevation change between the bottom of the, of the wetland and the top of the oak, uh, oak forest where, where the Denso buildings are, are contained. And what we'll do is we're going to, our, our burn unit will stop right at the base of the hill. And again, there's another transition in vegetation there. So we're going from, uh, we're going from the reed canary grass and fragmites that's contained in the, in the wetland to predominantly oak leaves that are on the slope. And there's, in, in most of those areas, there is mucky soil. It's just bare soil where the fire can't, can't cross. In some areas, those two types of vegetation, the grassy vegetation and the, and the oak leaf litter come together. And, you know, and, and in those places, we'll take leaf blowers and we'll kind of create our own burn break. We're, we'll create our own separation in, in the types of fuel that we'd be burning. So the fire, the fire is not going to, is not going to be burning up, up the slope through the woods towards, uh, towards Denso buildings. So again, floodplain forest surrounding east and south side, woods on the north and west side. And, uh, it's just the wetland, just those, the low lying areas that we would be focusing on. These are, these are, uh, actual shots of, of Valley Woods, uh, the wetland here. And you can see that in the, in the distance is that floodplain forest. And it's coming out, as, as we move out, we're seeing, uh, some of this reed canary grass uh, that Gary mentioned earlier. And you can see how it's forming this monoculture. It's really kind of driving out any kind of species diversity. And then the, the really tall vegetation in the back, uh, left is the, the fragmites. And that's, that's, you know, ten feet tall, nine, ten feet tall. You can also see that, that, uh, it's, it looks dead in this image. And that's because, uh, it's been treated with, with, uh, with herbicide as well. So that now we're going to burn, burn off that dead batch. And the idea is that that's going to allow a lot of the native vegetation to, to emerge.
I just want to make one comment because on the picture that we're looking at right now, it's green. And actually it's almost, it's so white, it's almost, almost white. It's still, because of the age, because of the type of weather we've been, but it's not.
Oh, right now it's all, yeah.
Yeah, it's all very dry and very pale yellow.
And, and, and that's, yeah, it's a great point. That, that, um, the greenness or a lack of greenness in the vegetation is one of the major determinants of kind of the timing of the burn itself. If we were to, if we were to burn the site at a time when it's this green, it would produce a huge amount of smoke. And it would probably even be difficult for the fire to carry through there because it would be trying to, to, uh, it, it's working against so much moisture in the vegetation. And so what we'd be, what we're looking to do is burn while, uh, while these types of plants are still in their dormant state, while they're essentially, you know, it's the dead batch material.
It looks a lot like, it looks a lot like dry tweeds, you know, compared to, like, sardine.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right.
Got one more slide?
One more, I'll ask you something.
Ah, yeah. So, and so we're looking at, at kind of, that, that period where the vegetation is in, in this dormant state. And, and so it would be sometime between, uh, now, a couple of weeks from now and, and April. It's all weather dependent. When we're burning, because, because we live in Michigan and it's a whole, you know, if you don't like the weather, wait for, for 10 minutes. We typically can't predict very accurately what the winds and humidity and temperature are going to be like more than about a day or two ahead of time. And so it tends to be this situation where on Thursday, we're, you know, I'm looking at all the weather forecasts and see that Saturday or Sunday is looking like it's going to be really good weather. And then we strike the notification process, um, to say, okay, Saturday is looking like, like it's going to be a good burn day. The actual burn itself is, is a pretty fast process. We're going to be covering about five and a half or six acres and that'll take, uh, probably less than two hours of actual fire on the ground. It's, it, you know, it smells like a, like a campfire. And it's, it's a, it's that type of, of an experience.
Okay, we have my question.
I just wanted David to mention a little bit about yourself and how many fires you've started in, in more communities in South Michigan.
I started when I was about four. And, and most of those, you know, the first five years, I didn't put them out as much as I started them. I've, I've done about five hundred and fifty or, or six hundred prescribed burns covering about six thousand acres throughout the state. I've got a great, uh, liability, general liability policy and I, I've never had a, a claim on that policy. We've never had an incident where we've had to contact the fire department for any kind of backup. We've always kept the fire where we expected the fire to be.
And other communities that use prescribed burns?
We've been doing burns in Detroit, uh, in, uh, the Rochester area, Oakland Township, burning throughout, uh, the metro parks, um, city of Ann Arbor, Lake Rapids, Holland, Kalamazoo, hundreds, probably literally hundreds of different communities around the state, including many in, in urban areas and throughout Southeast Monroe, City of Monroe.
Okay, we have a few questions, if you'd like, and then, and.
Okay. The, the primary object, the, the objective is to create a wetland?
To restore a more native habitat in the wetlands and also.
And wetlands.
Uh, part of the work that's not being done by David is there's some channels that were built in the, I don't know, the sixties or something to drain it. So we'll be filling those back in, so it's going to retain more water during storm events.
I have some more questions. Isn't there another way of doing this project and not using the burn method? I think there is. Now, let me tell you what I think. All the brush and all that vegetation can be cut and tilled into the ground and wait till it becomes compost for a short time. Now, when you burn an area, you're not burning the roots. They don't come down to the roots. It just burns the top vegetation and the top slubs and all that. So those roots come up again, okay? I know they do. So why not another method of cutting and tilling? There'll be no pollution, no smoke, no smell, no danger. Talk about the timing and the pictures you have and, and your, your record of no fires and the insurances and okay. That's not the only method you can use in doing this job, I believe, but I think.
I think it's, uh, probably more efficient, but I'm going to defer to some of the biologists here.
You're exactly right, that, that fire alone is not, is not the way of eliminating the.
I'm not a biologist, but I know, I know a little bit.
Yeah.
That it doesn't burn the roots. You don't have to be a biologist to know that it doesn't burn the roots. And there's a better way of restoring the land to a wetland or habitat or anything else. And when you do that, you plant your own desired plants and brush and everything. So it may not, it may not be the fastest way.
Right.
But it's the safest way and the best way of restoring a wetland, I believe. So why not, let's think about another method instead of burning. I think burning is, is, causes a lot of pollution, black smoke, white smoke, unnecessary. Our land, our air is polluted as it is.
Well, I think.
A thought, a thought. You're a, you're a landscape engineer, you know.
Yeah, there's different ways to do different things.
Yeah.
I think that there's some benefits to doing it this way in terms of bringing on some of the other.
Is there more benefit doing it the other way, the clean way?
I think that you, especially in a wetland, you might be getting into more soil disturbance and compaction and it'll be, you know, in that kind of wet area.
If you, if you cut it down to the roots, down to the earth, and then you till it, I'm not talking about a garden till, I'm talking about a big thing that the farmers use.
Yeah, down in the wetlands, they're, they're, they're not probably going to permit that disturbance.
You can't till in a wetland.
Who's not going to permit?
The DEQ.
State of Michigan would refuse.
They're going to permit the burning instead of?
The State of Michigan does not permit the burn. The local fire marshal permits the burn. They, because they use.
Does it have to be burned or the suggestion that I made, is that a proper way too, also?
To till.
To cut and till?
To cut and till. What you'll end up doing, I'll, Gary will explain this in more detail.
What do you end up?
You'll end up, you'll still deal with the roots and it's part of the root system.
No, you don't.
Let me finish. It's part of the root system, you are also doing spot treatment on any of the stuff that potentially comes back.
Well, you're ending up with all the roots burning it.
What the burning does.
You're not burning the roots.
The root, reed canary grass has very shallow roots so that the burn actually affects the, the top portion of it. And since the, the mass is gone, you're able to plant your new material in there, which then takes roots and pushes out.
Well, that prevents the previous roots from coming up.
It doesn't, it doesn't, uh, uh, it doesn't totally. So what you end up doing is coming back and doing spot treatment on those soils.
I don't believe that. I don't believe that. You're the expert, I'm, I'm the reader and you're the expert, okay?
Correct, okay.
No, I don't believe that.
We wouldn't be able to do your method.
Mary, Mary, who's the cell number?
I'm sorry, is this John Mara? I'm sorry.
From?
From, uh, environmental consulting and technology.
Think about what I suggested.
Same as Gary.
Okay.
E T T.
Okay. Oh, I, okay. I'm E T T, I know that.
Yeah. The, the, the method that we're, that we're doing is a method that's proven to work in areas where we have large monocultures of things like fragmites and reed canary grass. In the restoration of St. John's Marsh, uh, in Sterling State Park, in different areas, even in areas where we've got lots of buckthorn and things like that, it's a preferred method. Because one of the things that it does, even though you may be able to till this stuff back into the ground, there's certain things like fragmites which produces a chemical called gallic acid which actually prevents other plants from being established by conditioning the soil.
Wait a minute, you're going to put a, a chemical in there also after you burn?
No, it comes from the plant.
It comes from the plant itself. Fragmites, the reason why it's so, and, and even reed canary grass, the reason why they're so able to colonize these areas is because not only do they stop the other plants by growing over, but they also release chemicals into the ground that prevent other plants from being established. That's a two-part process.
You have to, you have to prove that to me, that the chemicals in the plants will prevent other plants from growing.
I continue, I continue technical report.
You have to prove that to me.
It's called gallic, it's called gallic acid.
I worked the garden here in the city and we till it and we, we till it into the garden, the compost, and then we plant and none of that ever comes up. I don't believe that.
Have you ever, have you ever tried?
Not a small garden, that's a forty foot garden.
Have you ever tried to garden underneath a walnut tree?
You garden under what?
Have you ever tried a walnut, uh, uh, garden under a walnut tree? A black walnut tree?
Yeah, there's technical. Same thing with pine trees.
Pine, yeah.
How many trees are you going to do cut down?
You can't keep a door.
How many trees are you going to cut down to restore the, to put the wetland in?
Whatever you want to do.
This is an open meadow, it's all things.
Well, don't forget trees, there's no trees there, it's open meadow.
I'm saying that, I'm saying the mechanism is the same. The mechanism and the same that makes a black walnut preserve its area so that it doesn't have other. No, I'm saying, it's, I'm saying that the mechanism is the same. The same way that a black walnut controls its area is the same way that fragmites controls its area. It's the same method.
I'm, I'm agreeing with Sid.
I don't, I don't agree with that. I, I agree, I, I think. Well, I'm thinking, okay? You don't get things too often. And I, you know, and I, I, I think I'm correct. Because burning is, is dangerous, number one, the pollution and a lot of harm to it. I'm, 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 I'm trying to suggest a, another way of doing it. There must be another way of doing it.
In this area, it would be very difficult to till that all up. So DEQ and D and I would not allow us to go in there and disturb all that soil and loosen it like what Philly.
Oh, come on, I don't believe that.
Oh, yeah, that large area.
No.
Because then you have a, you're going to have a rain event.
You've got to give me that in writing, that, that they don't, that, that what you're telling me is what they believe.
If you saw, this is a seven acre area that's not going to till.
Comparing an earth for, you know, to transfer it to, to a wetland or a different habitat.
Well, he sent you some information about prescribed burns. I don't think I have any examples of tilling.
Why don't you laugh more? Laugh a little louder, Myron Fraser, laugh a little louder.
Sid. Why should I?
You're covering your eyes and you look at him and he's laughing, you're both joking. Well, I'm not joking.
Neither am I.
No.
So you don't even know what I said, so.
I didn't hear, I don't have to hear what you said.
Well, of course not.
You said something to him and he started to laugh. That's, that's beside the.
Wait a minute, Sid, like Mary said, on the certain areas, D and Q will not let you go in there and till, okay?
It doesn't matter. I said my words.
I understand what you're saying, but we can get information that says you should not go in there and till certain areas. There are certain areas where you can't, you cannot go in there in touch.
I can't believe that.
DEQ is very, they have certain guidelines and you cannot go against their guidelines.
I've got to see it, that they, that they don't allow preparation of the land.
I have property of notice, I can't do certain things on my property that I own.
You don't, I don't want to, I don't want to hear that.
It's the same thing, it's the same thing.
I don't want to hear, I don't want to hear what that agency is trying to tell us, that we're not allowed to do that.
They're telling you you can't till in that area. You cannot till in certain areas.
Aloney.
No, Sid, whatever you want to think, the city of Southfield is not the, 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 get, everything here, M D E Q does have regulations and you cannot go out there and do that kind of stuff.
You have to show me that they, they don't allow tilling of the soil.
Can we get that from somebody?
Yeah, we'll get that.
He don't know.
They're right, they're right.
They would do this.
The kids, the kids, the kids, the farm.
I don't believe it.
Okay.
Take out to the.
Let us, let us get some information then for you, Sid, okay? And we'll give, Mary, between Mary and Brandy.
Before they contract the, the burn.
Before they contract the burn out, yes, we'll get that information to you, okay?
All right. And you'll find another way of doing it.
If, if, if there's another way, we'll look at it.
Okay.
Okay?
That's what I'm asking for.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Sager.
Um, I have two questions. Are you going to, um, I heard you allude to something. Are you going to be doing after the burn, uh, do you want to do planting, going to encourage?
Yeah, we're going to bring in native plants and seeds and seed that area.
Mary, you said seeds and plugs, right?
Yeah.
Plugs, yeah.
What's like, what are we getting in there exactly?
The, you, you currently as of, I think, I think as.
The, you, you currently, as of, I think, I think as of November, on your November council meeting, you had a, a contract that you awarded for that activity, which is, um, gonna be the plant and the seed and the restoration after the burn occurs, uh, in there. So that, they'll bring in the native plants and the plug sides, which will, is kind of already the pre-started seed, and then they'll also seed over the area to provide, provide additional, um, uh, spacing, uh, for the vegetation. And then that will start taking roots and any little, uh, invasive that, because of the roots, um, that may still be in the area, they will, uh, treat, um, and take out one more time.
With, with, with a WIC application?
With the WIC application, which basically means they're walking around with a little paintbrush and they paint the leaves as they come up.
All that acreage, they're gonna go around and put the chemical on each one?
That's, that's. That's why after the, after using the burn mechan, if you use the burn mechanism, you only have a few of those that come up. If you go and, using your methodology, if you use that methodology to go till and turn all that acreage under, you're looking at probably ten to fifteen times the cost of what a burn would be.
Well, how about forest fires?
Forestry uses this.
A whole area burns down and then in a year or so, everything comes up again and it's mush. They didn't have to put seeds on or anything.
A lot of their seeds, native seeds, still would be, even here, will be in the soil.
Still would be there.
Their own seeds regrow.
The na, the native seeds in the soil, the native seeds in the soil.
Yeah. There's so good.
No, no, I, I hit some floor.
I'm sorry.
Um, thank you for mentioning that, 'cause I didn't connect the dots between the earlier thing and this.
In that contract.
But, uh, another question for you, um, uh, to the immediate west of, uh, this site is a large condo complex. How, um, I don't doubt your expertise in controlling the fire, um, but, uh, anytime there's smoke, there are people gonna start calling, uh, nine one one, all of that kind of thing. So how are, uh, how is this gonna be communicated to the residents, especially, uh, and the other thing I'm thinking of, um, with my public school background, um, there are a lot of kids today with asthma and that wouldn't want necessarily be outside if the wind should blow, uh, towards, um, the condo complex. So, uh, what is, how, how does the notification?
Well, we're working with Fire Marshal Jim, but we've also met with the condo association board and, um, explaining the whole project with them, um, so they're aware that it's coming, you know, but, uh, and when we get closer, we'll, you know, be notifying them again, you know, that it's, it's coming up and.
The condo assoc.
Coming over there.
Okay.
Well, they, they look at the weather conditions that day, just like when we had the, the burn at, you know, we burned the house down with the fire training. They, they did it at a certain time so that the smoke would go straight up when, at Carpenter Lake, when we did the fire training on the house.
This is the, this is the condo association here, the one thing that Mary mentioned, we've met with them a couple of times. They've, uh, provided a letter to the city that said, anything you do on your property, you're more than welcome to do on ours, including doing the burn. So they were aware of it and they will be, you know, discussed, yeah, beforehand, 'cause they actually own, if you sell property lines on here, they own like this little piece of it. So in order to go do it on their property, you know, you wanna make sure you had authorization and they've said that. And again, as Dave said, the best way to do it is with the northeast wind, which keeps it, since this is a third, uh, forty-foot raised, uh, valley, keeps that smoke kinda down in the valley that's coming through here, um, and, which is part of the reason the, uh, short notice on the window of notification, um, which is, we've talked with Jim about and he's aware, you know, it's like, if the weather conditions, the humidity, the wind direction, everything's right, we're gonna go, if it isn't, if it's coming out of the east, no, you don't wanna, because again, you have that, the residents and stuff up here. So that's part of the planning process, is making sure that you hit those weather conditions right.
Well, I'm, I'm glad I asked the question and, uh, figured that you would have already thought of that, but, um, didn't know, um, how are you gonna do this? But, uh, thank you.
We're, we're also preparing, we're gonna have a press release that we'll send out a day before the burn or this morning.
And the stuff that's on here. You know, my point, and we, we, we. Oh, and, oh, I'm sorry, the centric here, my point is that there's a timeframe this is gonna happen, so when people.
Right.
I think the broader community would like to know.
And Nanny and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Obviously noticing that, you know, in Southfield, have some of the local regional TV stations, obviously, um, that was part of the reason, the dealing with the press releases, because, um, you can watch the news a lot of times and they are reporting life in Southfield, looking over the overpass as well.
Right.
If you wanna make sure.
They can also make an announcement that would help people not, not, not call, you know, the fire department if they have smoke.
Correct, yeah, that's correct, yeah.
We'll also, we'll, we'll put large, uh, you know, the D O B orange signs down on the overpass as well, that say prescribed burn ahead. People driving will have a sound.
Uh, yeah, so this is obviously the outlined area where the, the burn will take place, is there a deviation? I mean, do you, how high can you make that to, to make sure it stays in that area? Um, is there, you know, room for error and things like that, or? I'm certainly not gonna be riding my bike next to like the people on the picture boards.
Yeah.
So, so.
I was looking at that picture thinking, those people are old.
They're glass wall up there.
Yeah. It gives you a sense of, of, of how, in, in that, in that instance, the, the flame height was, you know, was about a foot and a half, a foot and a half tall, and you could see how controlled the, the smoke was. This, this area is really, uh, pretty devoid of veget, of, of, of burnable fuel. And what we'll do is, we'll have, uh, we'll have a backup, uh, a backup line on the, on the slope itself. We'll also, um, we have air pumps and hose, and hundred, hundred feet of hose, and we'll put a, we'll put a pump down at, at the river and run hoes, uh, around, around the unit.
You pretty strictly stay, I mean, that, that's not the suggested area, that's exactly fine.
That's the suggested area.
How close have you done it before in, close to other buildings? I know that you said there's the forty-foot drop-off, but how close in general?
We've, we've done, uh, we've done burns within about, uh, five, five feet.
Five feet, wow.
It, it depends on what the building is up, you know, if, uh, with, with brick buildings, we've gotten closer, uh, and again, we're, we're doing it very aware of what the, what the wind is doing, um.
Wow.
This is the Ann Arbor YMCA, um, and they've got this native vegetation that, that, you know, goes pretty much right up to, that's their landscape.
Is that in town?
Yes, right in the center of Ann Arbor. And this, this is, uh, this is, if, if people know Ann Arbor at all, this is, uh, here on Road is running right by, which is about the, the remain east-west over there.
And you said it'd be an hour, hour and a half?
Yep, that's all right.
What is the timeline, Mary? What is the timeline when all this is gonna take place?
It's gonna occur sometime, you know, after the permit is released, uh, between April and April and March. And the notification, um, when we've sent a press release, it is a fairly short, like twenty-four to forty-eight hours before, because they have to wait for the, you know, the, the wind conditions.
Perfect conditions, Sid, perfect conditions.
I'd like to see the, the official paperwork on the, on the guidelines of repairing all the.
Repairing all this?
Yeah.
Your, I burn applications, I think it's you.
Yeah, all that, I wanna see all that.
You know, the type of permits that, that, and, and, and National Forest, I was in Yosemite last summer and they had prescribed burn going, I mean, it's a standard.
I'm not talking about the prescribed burn, they do a lot of it. I'm talking about the, 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 uh, the earth, what happens to us when it burns like that, or if there's another type of method to do it. That's what I wanna find out.
All right, we, we said we get that.
I believe there is.
We said we get that to you.
But I wanna see all that.
All right.
Not that I can stop this, if the vote is six to one all the time, I, but.
We still like you, Sid, we still like you.
Okay, um.
Well, we'll do what we can do.
Anyone else, 'cause I have a couple things I want to ask you, you know, um. First of all, in terms of the burn, everything doesn't get burned all at once, does it? I mean, you, you don't, and I looked at the plan, I looked at the plan, and you burn certain segments and then you, um.
Lock it forward.
It's gonna be trained between one and one and a half hours.
Right. It's, it's, you're burning it as you go, and then you're, you're gosing, you're playing the fire, so you don't have everything out of control and all the fire lines and three lines. I, I understand it, I'm, I mean, I'm sorry if some people don't, but I, I have a, right, that's a, that's a very good, this is what I'm saying. I was at the site and I, I have to explain to people, I was, burns are, burns are very popular with furry people and plant people. Um, a lot of my environmental friends, and I'm one of them, but I'm not an expert on this, have very, uh, it's controversial, burns are controversial in, with some, uh, I'd say quite some environmental groups, because of the species that are sometimes displaced. I mean, you've obviously been doing this a lot and you have a lot of knowledge about it, and I'm glad to hear that you're concerned about the species in there. Personally, I would like to see this done, like, right away while it's cold, be, because in March, when it starts to get warm, when the dogs are shedding on the ground, and the turtles especially are coming out of the ground, that's, that's a concern to me, because that's part of what, what we, what we do normally. But I went down with Mary and with Brandy, um, about a little over a week ago, and saw how bad it really is. I mean, it's, it's not the kinda thing you can go pull out, it's so thick, it's so matted in there, and if you took heavy equipment in there, you would be compacting the, the soil, because it's wet. It's all that, whether it's in the, in the actual river channel or not. So I have to say, and I don't, you know, I have to be convinced, and I, I'm really a skeptic. I, I'm convinced that this is the only choice that you have, um, given all the circumstances. And I'm comfortable in saying that I'm, I can, I can say, you know, you have my, um, approval in the sense of, I'm comfortable that it's the right thing to do. So I, I wanted to say that because I've been, I have experts in, in the group that I belong to who do burns and know about burns and have expressed a lot of concerns to me about what, what, what the factors are, sometimes it's fragmites that can actually make them stronger. Some of these things, the burns can become stronger and come back and become stronger. I know what you're, you just know what you're doing and you're following your, 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 um, guideline, so I, I feel you on the way to do this, to be honest with you. I, I, I'm comfortable with it.
You're welcome.
One more, I'm gonna go.
Uh, President, uh, an expert? I'm an expert too in common sense, okay? I think it's, I think this is not the method, I think there's a better method. Well, I believe, and that's what I'm gonna find out.
That's what we told you we'd do, we'll, we'll give you the information.
Your point, just, just, uh, you know, the point of what you're, you all are saying is, you work at, you use different methods and try to use the best combination of all those methods. And part of what you're saying as far as, you know, is there other ways? Yes, you could come in and dump chemicals all over this and.
I didn't talk about chemicals.
No, no, what I, I, I understand, what I'm saying is, you use those tools that you have in your toolbox and you may end up using more than one, meaning prescribed burn, in this instance, lessens the thickness of what's that there. Then you can come in and do some of the other activities as well, because you now don't, in this instance, don't have all that thick grass that, even if you tilled it under, you've now created a mat down in that system that absorbs the soil and the water within that, so that you've now raised that elevation in the wetland, which actually we're trying to lower, so we get it wetter. But, you're right, so in some instances, in some of these other areas, like Mary said, there are some areas where we are actually, as part of this overall project, coming in and using other methodologies. I, where some of the fragmites are, because fragmites roots can go down and upwards of four feet, where those tall strands are, we're actually coming in, the contract that you let out, is one where they are excavating four feet of, uh, of material out, because we recognize that in the big fragmites, the ones that are, uh, ten to twelve foot tall right now, burning isn't gonna even affect them. It'll get rid of the mass, but that root system that you talked about is there four feet down. So what are we gonna do? Are the contract that's going out there, they're out there digging those roots out, and those, those roots are being taken to the landfill. They're not being taken to, you know, some park someplace else.
And being tilled into the soil.
And they're not being tilled in, because the root system.
They said there was a meadow there, no trees, a very sparsely tree.
Yeah, on the outside, yeah, the open area that you saw, find it, here, this is all open.
Okay, so there's no trees there and you don't have deep, deep roots then?
Fragmites can have roots.
You, you do want fragmites.
Head foot fragmites have roots three to four feet deep. So you, you have strands up here, you got strands over here, and this is a fragmites strand down here. So what is being done right now, there's a, you have a contractor in place who's out there, I don't know if he was out working that day you were out there, but he's out there digging these areas out, creating more open water in those in addition, but he's getting rid of those big, deep fragmites roots. The reed canary grass doesn't have four-foot deep roots, so the burn affects the top inch or so of the root system itself. And by getting rid of that heavy batch that you saw that one picture, how thick it is, by putting in the other plants and stuff, it allows those plants to then start elbowing in essence out the frag, or the reed canary grass. And as they, they've established, 'cause you put plugs in, you come back using the mixed tool bag, you come back with the WIC system for any of those little invases to come in, now you don't have to go use chemicals on this whole thing. You can come back and use chemicals on a few plants, like walking around and basically painting that one, coming over and painting that one. So I agree with you, you don't go and use one methodology when you go do something, you use all the, the things that are in your toolbox.
Well, you didn't say that before, but I still don't believe, I don't believe that the burning is the main method, okay?
Between the burning and the excavation, Sid, that will take care of it, that's what we're saying. With a little bit of, of the.
I wanna see the guidelines from the, from the state or federal agency.
We'll, we'll, I, and I said, we'll get that for you, okay? And we'll get to all the council members.
Yeah, well, uh, I, I understand he had information requested, when should we expect to see this again, because it's, you're looking at a March, it early is March.
Brandy?
Technically, we're gonna, you know, it was more informational than.
Oh, yeah, there, there, there's no council action required.
But I would say probably within the next few weeks or so, we can get that information to you guys.
Oh, yeah, we're not about to have a large fire without.
Right, it's not, without you guys knowing, okay?
Especially since we have never issued a permit like this.
We've never had one before.
Never had one, so, so people have to understand.
Again, Mr. Dundas is not gonna let us burn anything until it's perfect conditions, okay?
Speaking of, you know, toolbox, uh, is one tool we need to be able to explain this thing in one sentence, someone calls.
Yeah.
If you get a call, okay, first we'd say, we'd calm them down and say, this is, you know, control, try to explain this.
We know about it.
Okay, what is the public benefit of this entire project? Okay, when you read the item, you get, it, it has to do with clean water and, and better, I guess, control of, of, uh, rainwater or.
Restoring a wetland for both storm water management and, and wildlife habitat, that's the sentence.
Part of the, whole, whole part of the Great Lakes restoration.
Yeah, we're a small part of the larger project.
Right, this contributes to clean water.
Yeah.
Well, that'd be there.
I, I just, I really hope that the weather conditions are such that you can do this sooner rather than later, because it will start to affect the species.
Yes, and we do too.
I'll give you a similar example, I do just say, the hospitals and the patients in the hospital, the hospital is there, but the patients die sometime. So you're saying there's gonna be clean water after that and, and birds and everything?
What we're saying is, we're trying, we're trying to clean up the river, okay?
I know what you're trying to do.
We're not gonna say it's gonna be completely clean, Sid, we're saying it's gonna be.
I'm just talking about different methods.
Okay, I'm just saying too, though, that, you know, it's not gonna be perfect, we know it's not gonna be perfect.
And those people that are gonna get the, the smoke and the, they're gonna get it, they're gonna complain plenty.
And that's why we have Mr. Dundas here and he's gonna tell us exactly when.
And he's gonna, he's gonna be Moses and God.
No, he's not gonna be Moses, but he's gonna tell us, he's gonna tell us when our best time is to burn this, okay? That's, that's kinda what his job is.
Cliff, Cliffy. Sidney's telephone number on it. Yeah, Jim, uh, Jim's done a lot of due diligence on this, so I think we need to hear from him.
Are you gonna have a pumper and stand by?
Jim, on this, uh, head and chief of fire marshal, um, one of the things I would say is that we've never had a permit like this before, and that's because I'm in the fire prevention business and we typically don't allow that anywhere in Southfield for anything to be burned. If someone wants to burn these in the yard, we don't allow that. It does however, fit within the fire code and there's a permit process for that. Um, the, the permit that we're going to issue for this, uh, should everything fall into place, um. Um, the, the permit that we're going to issue for this, uh, should everything fall into place, um-
How do you know you're gonna issue a permit already?
That's why I said if everything falls into place, I'm thinking of it. Again, this is not the kinda thing that I immediately jumped up and said, this is gonna be to burn this, I wanted to understand it, I did a lot of research on it. I've, uh, taken these folks, uh, from, uh, ECT and Plantwise to the Ringer, they've proven to me that they have a very safe procedure for this. Uh, when I talked to Dave Mendel, I asked him, uh, had he ever had a fire that got away from him? And he said, not in the, what, fifteen years that you've been doing this, Dave, so he said? And I can surely guarantee that there won't be one in my lodge either. We'll make sure that all the safety precautions are in place. Um, if we issue a permit, uh, Mr. Lance, uh, the, the cost of the permit will cover any potential overtime costs that we're gonna have as well. Um, I have researched the process, uh, they did, uh, twenty-six of these type of burns in Ann Arbor last year. I talked to the Fire Marshal in Ann Arbor, and, um, she was willing to, um, advocate for the process and for this particular company, and went there very sharp, because they know what they're doing, and I believe in that. Well, there's any questions, I'll be at the end.
Jim, if you had the access to the site, how would you do it?
Uh, there's a very limited access here, um, if, if, if the worst thing could possibly happen where the fire got away from them in some way, which again, I can almost guarantee that that's not gonna happen, the job of the fire department would be basically to check, protect the exposures of the buildings in relationship to the woodland, so, um, on, you know, on the backside here, we'd be looking at the Denso property here. There is a parking lot there with some very limited access to it. If we were gonna put water on it, it would be with a master stream device or, uh, you know, a water cannon from some distant lake.
We have an access drive that comes in right off of what's, what's a typical drive, the-
Yeah, and-
Construction type of-
Yeah, and it, and the, the weight of our trucks would probably not allow us to go into that, uh, into the soft earth area there. Uh, the same is true with behind Mary Weather, so here's a parking lot, they give us some access to the backside. But we would mostly be lobbing water in the distance and protecting the exposure.
And if you needed to get in there, we would be there with equipment to help you get out if you had to.
Right, and, uh, and Mr. Mendel is bringing his own water, uh, his own pumps, his own people that are trained in extinguishing fires, they also keep a certain amount of water on their backs if you're burning things, should something go in the wrong direction or a wind change, they're prepared to deal with it.
All right, thank you very much. Awesome, um, how long is the burn, how long does the burn last?
Uh, between an hour, hour and a half.
How long will the smoke, uh, be present?
Um, I'm assuming it's the same time period?
Yeah, it'll, it'll typically linger maybe for another hour, after, after the, all the fu, fire and smoke have disappeared.
And they're a part of the permit, some of the conditions of the permit, uh, would be that there would be people there on site after the fire is out, to make sure that there's no weakening or any, uh, unprotected fire.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome. It hasn't worked though. It hasn't worked out for a match.
Ah, it sure was. Retired.